Mayor Stock, she will be here momentarily.
Okay, great. Well, I'm gonna go ahead and trusting that's gonna happen. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a work session for the City Council of the City of Manzanita. Let me just throw in, in the great state of Oregon, which is just always a nice thing to say. We've got two items on our workshop agenda this afternoon. First will be the continuation, which may be brief. We'll see how it goes about the quarterly rate study. This is a follow-on from an hour and 45-minute session we had last month on this topic. So the point there is to not exhaustively go through it all again. I'll do a bit of a recap of where we are on the work and then we'll see what questions councilors might have. That'll be the councilors discussing that. And then the next item will be the Manzanita Comprehensive Plan Public Advisory Steering Committee. So Lynda Kessner is here to introduce that group of fellow citizens or Manzanitians. Not sure what the technical term is for that, Manzanitians, to talk about the work they're doing on the comprehensive plan. They were with the Planning Commission just a few short days ago and did a similar thing. So they wanted to reach out and make sure council knew who all those folks were, and so looking forward to that. So those are our two items for today. Just as a reminder, for people who aren't familiar or as familiar with this format as they might be perhaps with a council meeting, these are meetings intended so that council can dive deep into topics that we may not have enough time to spend on in a normal course of a normal council meeting. So these are not meetings for public comment. They're intended to give us some time and space to work out loud together. Questions we may have that have to do with policies developing or other matters for the city. And we will not make any decisions, so there are no votes taken in these work sessions. We might start to get a sense of where, how people are approaching a question or a concern in advance of the next council meeting, but there is no vote, there is no decision made in this session. So that's the opening. And I think we'll just go ahead and get started. So the quarterly rate discussion is a continuation of work following the filing of a referendum that'll be on the ballot for this coming November. And that is ballot measure 29-179, having to do with billing cycle for water service. So the question on the ballot is, shall the City of Manzanita read water meters and bill for water service on a monthly basis?
I am so sorry I'm late.
You're fine, you're fine. We're just getting started. I just went through the agenda, Lynda, so we're good. We're good, and you know that already, so we're fine. So shall the City of Manzanita read water meters and bill for water service on a monthly basis rather than quarterly? Strictly a matter of billing cadence. And in order to prepare for that referendum, prepare for that vote, the city has gone ahead and commissioned a second water study to look at what the impact of quarterly billing versus monthly billing would have on rate or the rate structure. That was what we discussed for nearly two hours in our last work session. And if there is anyone either on the call now or reading, looking at this in future, if you want to have a more full background on that study and the analysis, you can definitely point yourself towards the September 11th council work session on that. There's a good presentation from the city manager. Our contractor that we work with from the Oregon Association of Water Utilities was there, as was our Public Works Director, Dan. So the intent today is not to rehash or review all of that material. It's to really open it up to council now to say that since we've had some time to review or reflect since the last meeting, knowing that, well, are there questions or anything anybody would like to get, you know, onto the record about their thoughts about the options that we presented? But I should say, let me back up a minute. The, if things go the way we think they will go, the referendum will be voted on and finalized on Election Day, which is November the 5th. Just based on the timing of the calendar, the council actually meets the next night. So we're presuming, it's not 100% sure, but we're presuming we will know the results of that referendum. So if the referendum passes with yes votes, then we will continue on the monthly cycle and the monthly rates as they've been in place now for many months. If the referendum fails and it's a no vote, then we will go to a quarterly billing cadence. So the question we tackled in our last work session were the two options that the consultants offered us. Option one and option two, and we can go through, we didn't, we don't have a full presentation on this again, but I hope councilors have got a, I've got a copy of it here with me and I can go through it out loud if you'd like me to. But I really just wanted to start to get a sense from council if they've got any thinking they've had on this matter since the last meeting and anything they'd want to share or any questions. Tom?
Thank you. So, excuse me. Let's say that the no vote prevails. Are we gonna have an ordinance or a resolution ready for the November 6th meeting?
That's the goal.
Okay.
Yeah, and we can have, you know, we can have, I haven't been this through, through this personally, but I talked with Leila this week as we were preparing for council, and she can have and drafted both, both options. The idea would be that that's the, that would be the decision-making meeting where we would decide which option if the referendum fails. And we'd be ready, hopefully, to, hopefully, ready to make a vote and decide which of those options. And we'd have the language of the, of the, we'd have the language all ready to go for that, so we can vote on it, yes.
So we'd be rescinding the ordinance that provided for the monthly billing if the no vote prevails?
I will leave the technical description of that to Leila, but the spirit of it would be, we would do whatever was necessary in terms of the ordinances or resolutions to keep the rate structure in place, but change the billing cadence from monthly to quarterly. Yeah. And I would be happy to restate the two options if that's helpful for council to do. I want to follow your lead on that.
Just go ahead, Tom.
One other question is, would we be required then to treat the matter as an emergency?
I don't know.
Okay.
Do you want to share your thinking behind that question or just save that and we'll get an answer to that in preparation for the November meeting?
Well, just so that, you know, so that we're ready to land on our feet and expeditiously as possible. You know, if it turns out that it's a no result, that's gonna tell us that these people are really passionate about this issue. And I think we should definitely be ready to move forward, and so.
Yeah, we're all in agreement on that, Tom. I couldn't give you the specific answer because I'm not a city manager, but yes, that's the spirit of it. That's why the study was initiated immediately. That's why we had the sessions and the timing that we did, so that we could be ready to go immediately after the election. Yeah. Yep, we're agreed on that.
I think, I think that a no vote would mean that we would just fall back to the ordinance that existed before the council took the action that's being referred to the voters, so we wouldn't have to pass a new ordinance. The ordinance, the prior ordinance would prevail, and then we can adjust the rate schedule if we determine to by resolution, which wouldn't have to be by emergency. I don't think you can do an emergency resolution. But I agree with Catherine that in the end, we pay the city manager and the city attorney to make the right call on the technicalities. But I think, I think what is important is for, and the mayor's already done this, but I think we need to make this as clear as possible. Why do we, why do we need to take action the day after we find out the results of the referendum? And the reason is because if we do revert to quarterly billing in order to have the right numbers in place by the beginning of the next quarter, January, February, March, we need that lead time, and that's why this study was done in advance. And that's why we've talked about it somewhat exhaustively at the last work session, because it's building on something we've already been through with the original rate study. It doesn't take too much further analysis. So I think it's gonna be another one of those situations where we'll be ready to act on that first Wednesday in November. And it may appear to somebody who's just come into the issue that night that, whoa, this is a big deal that they're just, you know, snapping their fingers on. But I feel like we've done a lot of homework in advance to be ready for whatever happens on the first Tuesday in November. The other thing that, it's kind of late to be bringing this up, but the language here, the language here is a little odd. We have been calling this a referendum. It's really a referral. What's, what's being referred to the voters, it's an action that's already been taken by the council. And that's why a yes vote affirms the council's decision. A no vote rejects the council's decision. And so I know there's been a little bit of confusion about that, but I've been reading more clearly in different places that, you know, what a yes vote is, what a no vote is. And I feel pretty good about that at this point.
Thank you for the reminder about the language. The language matters to me, and that's a, that's a better way to say it, and it's the correct way to say it. Thank you. Brad, did you have anything you wanted to add or query?
It was clarified during discussions with the other councilors, just that we will be doing the administrative part to make it official if there is a change by the voters. And we will also be making a decision on a change to rates that revert back to quarterly. So that was, that was my clarification, but we already discussed that.
Okay, so the, the heart of the matter, Lynda, I'm sorry, did you want to say something? Okay, the heart of the matter will, between the two options that we have will be the percent of budget that we achieve with those two options. So option one, which puts us, you know, two units a month times three months is six units. So at six units, with basically things just tripled, the monthly rates just tripled, then nothing is going back to the old way of billing or the amounts. It's the ones that have been in place now on a monthly basis. So if we do that, as we discussed last month in this workshop, we'll get a target of 91% of budget. So that's less than desirable. The average that they normally recommend and you want to shoot for is more like 95. So the second option that we have to look at is, again, it'll be for six units, but it raises slightly the amount of the cost of those six units by about $7 and change. That gets us to 100, excuse me, that gets us to 95% of budget. So I would just, I'm sharing my thinking about where and how, what I think the actual choice is from my perspective for a vote. From my perspective, the vote is based on what portion of the budget we need to capture by, from the ratepayers. Because as we've talked over and over again, but it still bears repeating, our water fund in its entirety is funded by the people using the water that's produced. It's a very simple thing, but it's different than how it, we found that there's been some good education that needed to occur because people didn't real, it's very simple, and it's as simple as that. We pay, the ratepayers pay the water, and that's what funds our water system. And one of the differences that we're dealing with now and why we're focused on budget in a different way than has been the case the last, for a while now, has been that we are starting to pick up capital projects and improvements and changes that are necessary to keep the water system going. So our budget and the budget that we're looking to achieve with these water rates is based on getting current service and keeping current service, good service, reliable service to people. And it's also includes the money we need to get ahead of things before they break. I mean, that's as simple as I can put it. You know, that old phrase, it ain't, if it ain't broken, don't fix it, does not apply to your water system. That would be a bad way to run a water system. So, so the budget is what I've got on my mind. I don't know that we'll need to make a choice. That'll depend on what happens with the referral and the vote on it. But that's the, that's the difference between those two, 91% of budget versus 95% of budget. And that, to me, is the most important difference in those two options and the one we have to consider. So are there any other comments or questions that we have on that? Okay, we've been talking about this a lot. We've been doing our homework. And we've been trying to share as much as we can in every venue we can create for people to be aware of that and understand not, well, the time and the seriousness that everybody has put into it and the dollars that the city has invested to get the referral on the ballot and to do a good job of being ready for a vote regardless of how it occurs. So questions to council are still very welcome on this. In Oregon, we get our ballots measured, mailed to us, so we kind of are ahead of the curve of a number compared to other parts of the country. But the ballots will be going out soon. So I would just say, if you do have any questions at all, you can feel free to reach out to city, city staff, any of the councilors, and we'd be happy to talk with you or answer those questions. Tom?
I just wanted to say that at our last council session, I made the complaint that people that are disposed to vote no on this have essentially not reached out and talked to us at all. And since then, I've had two conversations with local residents that are disposed to vote no. And we received a letter from Dietmar Kruger and Stephanie Simpson voicing that same point of view. And I just want to thank them for talking to us or to me. And I really appreciate that you're talking to council and making your feelings known. That's all.
That's great. Thank you, Tom. Is there anything else before we move to our next agenda item?
Well, would there be, would it be advantageous to have a better sense of where council is leaning on the choice to be made on November 6th? We don't know if we have to make the choice, but if we have to make it, we're gonna make it that night. And, you know, oftentimes we use work sessions to reveal whether or not there is a particular consensus developing.
Yes, that's fine, within the confines of what we can do in a work session. So what's the best way to do that, to just take a poll on current point of view? Or how maybe you could take the lead by example, Jerry, and we'll go, we'll do a round robin?
Yeah, so I guess what's frustrating about the campaign is the campaign is about yes or no on monthly versus quarterly billing. It's really not the issue that we're talking about today. But the issue that we're talking about today seems to be the undercurrent. People have been concerned about the change in rates. Other people have been applauding the fact that after years of not keeping up with inflation and not being prepared to pay for capital projects needed for the water system that council did, make a difficult but a serious effort to correct the math. So what I, what I said at the last work session was that because it was difficult to finally do what previous councils had not done, I didn't see a good reason to backslide, which we would be doing if we opted for the tripling of the monthly rate. We would be then likely only recovering 91% of the budgeted amount needed to run the water system. Whereas the, the option that slightly raises the base rate if we are going to be billing quarterly gets us to that best practice level of 95%. I just don't see the value at this point of backsliding. It was difficult enough, difficult enough for the council to make the, the choice that it made in July of '23. I think it was a good choice. Lynda was gracious enough to remind us that in 2015, a prior council was advised to make a particular increase in rates, and that council opted to make only half that increase. And then never, from 2015 until 2023, did the council or the city managers involved make an inflation adjustment. We finally seem to have turned the corner on that sort of somewhat neglectful financial management of the water system. And I just don't see a good reason to immediately backslide. So I would strongly urge that we select the option that keeps us at that 95% targeted level.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak?
I would concur with Jerry that I think it's very important from the budgetary perspective is to go with the option two that would get us within the 95% of the budget with the projects we have slated out for future. I just think it's paramount that we need budget to be able to make forward and not backslide.
So in some of these conversations that I've had in the past couple of weeks, I've been talking to people about the responsibility of council to operate the water utility in a way that funds it properly. A lot of people will talk about government ought to run like a business. Well, a business doesn't plan to short itself just so that, you know, a few, well, I don't want to belittle it by saying a few voices, but I just don't see how you pay for a water study and don't take the advice of the expert. I don't see how you decide to do something that shorts the water utility. One person directed me to a slide in a presentation that Dan made to council in May of 2023, showing that because council had not increased the rate, that over that period of time, the water utility did not collect almost a million dollars over that period of time and would be slated to not collect $155,000 that year. I don't know how you continue to defer maintenance and improve service by shorting the water utility. So hitting the 95% mark seems to me like the only way you can do that responsibly.
Thank you, Tom. Lynda, you're muted.
Thank you. Just a few short comments. One is, I think we made a lot of changes at once, and I think that it caused a lot of concern in the community. I think that's something we need to take into consideration as we move forward. Secondly, I think the, the difference between monthly and quarterly, the referendum itself, got conflated with cost in the sense that it was gonna be cheaper or we were gonna go back to the way we were, given the fact that we went back to quarterly, which was inaccurate and unfortunate. And then lastly, I just totally concur with what everybody has said. We've got to run this city so that it can effectively move forward and maintain the system and provide the quality of service that we become, we have become known for. And the only thing that, that in hindsight I would do differently is I might spend more time upfront explaining why we were doing it and what we were gonna do. But we did, we tried. So I am supportive of the covering the total cost at 95%. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna refer back to an experience I had months ago when both Lynda and myself and also Dan Weitzel participated in a meeting that council, excuse me, Commissioner Doug Olson, Tillamook County Commissioner Doug Olson convened of small water systems. Lynda and I went down to Tillamook to be in that meeting in person, and we sat in a room full of people where we actually were the larger system, which was kind of funny because that's typically not where Manzanita lands when we're meeting with cities across the state of Oregon. But in this case, we were one of the larger systems. And that room was full of people, particularly the people who worked in the public utilities themselves and were the water operators, that expressed a great deal of disappointment in their councils and their water district leadership for not having done the right thing to keep pace with the cost of system and to be realistic with people, whether they were happy with it or not, about what needed to be done with aging infrastructure. Every city in our state faces that in a number of ways, and this is one example. And I just, I guess you can tell from my voice how strongly I feel about this and what a sense of responsibility I personally feel about making sure that we are doing the right thing financially for our water system, our water system. And by that, I mean also the additional several hundreds of households that are served by that water system that are not able to vote on this measure, who have let us know in quite uncertain terms that they would love to be able to vote and are unable to. So this is one of the biggest responsibilities that we have as councilors. And I have no problem supporting the 95% option. It's the right thing to do. So with that said, we'll wrap up on our first topic. And thank you, everyone, for your contributions, and thank you for your guidance there, Jerry, to get us into this part of the meeting, which we needed to do. And I'm gonna go on mute because my dog is starting to really talk to me about some things here, and I hope, can you hear her at all? Good, she's whining. You don't want to hear that. So I'm gonna ask Lynda Kessner to, there she goes, make herself apparent. Hang on one second. Hi, Lynda.
Hey, Catherine.
So Lynda's here and also Cody O'Coin is here, our Hatfield Fellow. Cody, nice to see you both. I'm going to turn it over, if that's all right with you, Lynda, to do some introductions and inform council about the work that the Citizens Committee has been doing. And if you need me for anything, just holler.
Okay, great. I do need to be able to share screen, and let's hope it works today.
I think Nancy will make that possible, I hope.
Nancy. Yes.
Great.
Let's see. Ah, are you seeing the breeze? No, yes.
Yes, we are. That's excellent. You go forth.
I don't know what happened on Monday, but I'm very grateful that it's working today. And I'm also grateful for your time and the opportunity to get to speak to you and the public about the Public Advisory Steering Committee and the Comprehensive Plan Update Project and what we're doing. So thank you for that. I'll try to be brief. Let's go through our agenda. I just want to talk at a really high level about the Public Advisory Steering Committee's roles and who's on the committee, the community participation efforts that we have underway. I'd like to do a quick demo of the city and project websites so you can see what's out there. I'd like to do a quick demo of the city and project websites so you can see what's out there. And then see if you have any questions or feedback or additional ideas for the team. And the Public Advisory Steering Committee has two primary roles. Very simply put, we are to advise the project team and to do community engagement. So let's talk about what that means. The advising the project team component primarily will be reviewing the goals and policies that the project team puts together. We are working on the 14 mandated goals that apply to Manzanita in a phased approach. So we'll be working on them in four different blocks. But as we go through it, we'll need to come back and make sure that everything makes sense together. And things like the the housing ordinance updates complement the language that we're seeing in the chapters in the comprehensive plan. And most importantly, our role is to make sure that the values and the vision that we are collecting from the community, we see reflected in the comprehensive plan documents that are produced. And if we don't, we need to be able to justify to the community why something is not there. Maybe there's a really fantastic idea, but it's not technically legal or it's not something we can take on at this time. So that's the advisory role. And the community engagement is really our primary function right now. We are tasked with being basically the champions for this project. And we're to guide public outreach and engagement efforts by hosting public and private events where we can talk to people, encouraging the community to participate and to come up with as many ways as possible to make that participation easy and feasible for them to do. We're also acting as liaisons to specific constituencies or interest groups. We have a pretty lengthy list we've identified of local stakeholders. Those would be our, the health district, local nonprofits, our local business owners. So we want to be able to engage with all of these groups in a meaningful and substantive way. And if you think of other ways that we could be engaging the community, we would love to hear that. I'm gonna stop sharing for a second and hope I can get it back, just so we can put some faces and names together. As I said, I'm Linda Kessner. I was motivated to join this committee because I feel like this is a really exciting time for Manzanita and we have a really strong and involved community. But I feel like there are opportunities for growth and opportunities to make that community even more diverse and interesting through removing barriers to housing. So that was my motivation and like to have the other committee members who are here today say hi, start with Mark, since I see him next.
Hi, I'm Mark Adamson. And similar to Linda, it's I was motivated primarily by the opportunity to contribute to something with such a long term scope of impact. So a 20 year time horizon or more, something that I think it's it's great to to be here and have this moment to to contribute. So.
Thanks, Mark. I see Brian next. Do you want to?
Sure. My name is Brian Sand. I'm fairly new to Manzanita. I've been here just coming up on two years. I love Manzanita and I'm super happy to be on the Advisory Steering Committee. I'm kind of leaning into the fact that I'm fairly new and hoping that it will make, well, I am super curious about what the citizens really think and what they really want. And I'm just really here to listen very carefully and reflect that back as the plan gets developed. And like I said, I'm just really happy to be here and really happy to help in any way I can.
Thanks, Brian. Let's see, Rick Jackson is here too, Rick. Unless he's out in his yard working hard again.
Yep, I'm here.
Hi, Rick.
Yeah, I'm not on video. I did something to have my video privileges revoked, I guess. So not able to start my video. Oh, there it is. There it is. Yeah, hello, everybody. Just my quick story, why I was interested in PASC is I am thrilled to be just a two and a half year veteran, to be what Catherine, I would call a Manzanitan. I'm going with that. But only have been a Manzanitan for two and a half years. And I thought this was a great opportunity, not only learn my neighbors better, to Mark's point, make a difference for the future. But also I have always been trained to be part of the solution, not part of the problem. And it bothers me that we have some dissenting voices out there that I think this is an opportunity to bring community together and let's all get on the same page. I hope that's a potential outcome of this effort.
Thanks, Rick. And we have three other members of the community who are on the team are not able to come today. I'm sorry about that. We have Connie Burton and John Reiman, who is part of the Dune Association and Dune Management is a big part of the plans. So I'm very happy to have his expertise. And Patrick Johnston, who many of you know from his work on the Short Term Rental Committee. So we're grateful to have them as well. And we have our decision maker component to the team. We have Mayor Stock and Council President Kozlowski and Planning Commissioner John Collier. Would you like to say anything as well? Or just?
Oh, I, not really.
Okay, that's fine. Let's see if I can get my share back. Basically, we wanted this opportunity for the public and for you all to be able to put faces and names together and let's see, my sharing right? If you see us out and about on the street, stop, say hello, schedule some time to talk to us. We're really excited to do this work and we really want to talk to as many people as possible. So please take advantage of us and let us know what you think. For the Community Peer Participation Effort, I really want to make a point right now that when we say community, we are not limiting this process to Manzanita residents. We want to hear from every person who lives, works, or plays in Manzanita. Everybody's opinion is important and it's going to help build a really strong fabric for us to base this plan on. So please do reach out, please do share. So let's talk about what we have in place today. We are doing face to face interviews with individuals. We would love it if you would say, hey, could you come and talk to our book club or whatever group you represent? Please do invite us to come and talk with your, with your, with your group, with your family. We'd be delighted to do that. We have an online version of the survey that we're asking people right now. I'll show you where you can get to that. And then if you have any other ideas, please let us know. I was just chatting with Alela yesterday and we talked about how having some information in the water insert would be great because there are a number of people that may not be in living, that have a home in Manzanita, but may not be here to be aware of what's going on. So we want to be able to reach out to as many people as possible. If I haven't said that already. So we do have a project website and a lot of information that's available on the city's website. Are you seeing this okay? If I almost, okay, great. So let me show you what we have. First of all, here is our gorgeous Community Summit poster. We have our first of four, at least planned summits for the public coming up on Monday, the 28th at the Pine Grove at 5:30. There is limited seating, so please do come to the website and sign up to come. This is going to be a bit of a presentation from the project team and then a hands on working session where we're going to be able to do some exercises that will, again, gather information that's critical to. We're focusing this section, I believe, mostly on housing, open spaces and historic space issues. So there's lots to talk about, lots for you to contribute to, so please do come. Here is one of the ways that you can access the Community Conversation Survey. So click on that. It's about a five page survey should take you. Well, as much time as you want to contribute, we have questions like it's 2045, what do you imagine Manzanita looks like? So you can do this in the leisure of your own home and really give us some thoughtful feedback. And here's a way for you to access the project website. But before I jump there, I do want to scroll down and remind you that over here, we still have this envisioned Manzanita section here. This is going back to a lot of the public sessions and surveys that happened two years ago. That data is still pertinent. It's still important. You can still look at it and access it here on the city's website. A lot of what we're doing now is to make sure that we're we're confirming the information we gathered two years ago. Is it still valid collecting information from newer community members? So this has been a long term, ongoing process. But let's jump over to the project website. I'm going to focus on three pages. First is the the home landing page. It will have announcements at the top of anything that's coming up soon. Has some detailed information about what we're doing. And if you want to really dive deep in on the Oregon bills that are impacting the housing ordinance decisions that must happen or the goals that we're going to be working on, you can have fun and read all about it here. There's a high level project schedule on this page. And it shows the, the planned timing for the different public meetings and what we'll be working on as we go through this process. And again, he was on the committee. And if you want to sign up for project specific updates, this is a place where you can do that at the bottom of this homepage on the project website. And then you'll get information about new surveys as they come out. And just drop my mouse, hold on. Nothing can go perfect when I'm involved. Let's see. So anyway, that's a great place to go to get on that list. On this project resources page, there's a little more detailed schedule. So if you want to know what we're working on in different phases, when we're planning to have community summits, that information is going to be here. There's also links to recordings to our prior PASC and Planning Commission meetings that are pertinent to this process. And any documents that we want to share with the public will be here. The most important thing is at the bottom of this page, the project resource page has a contact us form where you can put in your email and your message saying, oh, I'd love for you to come and talk to my group. I would love to schedule an appointment to talk to you. I'm really confused about what you're talking about when you're talking about X. Send it in and someone will get back to you as soon as possible. We really want you to reach out to us if you have questions or want to talk to us. And finally, in the get involved area, this is again where we're going to have announcements about upcoming meetings and is another access point to that same survey. So we do want to encourage you to take the survey. And I believe Leila said that this particular survey will be up at least through the Community Summit, probably into early November. And then we'll probably update it with a new version of the surveys or a different survey. So please take advantage of this one while it's up there. It's really important information that's going to inform a lot of the decisions that we're making. So I think at this point, I would like to ask you if you have any questions or feedback or comments for the team. And we would love to answer them. Oh, Jerry, go ahead.
I was on the website the other day and that's where I learned about the option of literally having a one on one, I think, with a committee member, which was interesting. And I thought two things. One is, are those, are those structured interviews or are they kind of open ended or how do you, I don't know if you've been doing them yet or how's that working?
We have, we have been given a questionnaire from the project teams that we are to use. They're pretty open ended questions, but they they generate some really interesting feedback. And they're fairly similar to the questions that are in the online survey. We're asking, you know, basically, what are your hopes and concerns today and about the future? And what do you want to see Manzanita look like over the next 20 years? So that's what we're asking today.
So another thought I have is that you guys are working on something that is absolutely, as Mark said, got a long horizon out there, 20 years and big picture. And that's really the kind of thing that I think most counselors enjoy working on. I think, you know, there's a lot of stuff that comes before us that is in that realm. And then there's a lot of more day to day stuff that people often get very energized about and passionate about. And so if you, if somebody comes to the committee and is giving you a little bit of the long range stuff that you need, but also is got some energy on something that's a little smaller. Is there a way for you to sort of funnel them in the right direction? It may not, their passion on a relatively smaller day to day issue may not really advance the larger conversation on the comp plan. But they're still coming to a representative of the city with, with with a concern or a question or a, or a problem. Is there a way for you to sort of make sure they get redirected?
I think that's, that's a bit circumstantial, but I, we are tasked, I believe, to take whatever anyone wants to talk to us about back to the project team and to the city. And if someone's super passionate about something, then that's something we want to know and we want to record it. And it may not be exactly what we were after today, but it may inform some other decisions. So we want to hear what people have to say and we're not going to try to direct them more than we need to. And I'm happy for anyone else on the team to.
Cody's got something to say.
I think if it falls beyond the scope of what we're doing, I can help triage for sure. Like, that's kind of why I'm here, just for communications. But like Linda said, we're doing our best to, right, be as unbiased as we can. And we're trying to acquire data. And then those who are coding that data are going to obviously take the larger themes of that data into maybe a little bit higher consideration, just because, right, more interviewees actually spoke to those things, but data is data, right? And we want to gather as much as we can. And I think Linda mentioned this as well. We really want a diversity of perspective, which is why we're trying to accumulate as many different stakeholder groups as possible.
Thanks, Cody. Does that answer question, Jerry?
Yeah, I mean, I think Tom Campbell has expressed some frustration. I think all of us are a little frustrated. We, we know there are concerns out there. We know there are issues. Sometimes we, as a council, ask for input and it's not forthcoming always. You guys are a new group, a different group. You're clearly asking for input. I think you're going to get it. I hope you do. And I just want to make sure that if you get some that doesn't fall neatly within, you know, the parameters of what you've been charged with, but it's still citizen input that the city government at some level or some committee or staff or elected or whatever should respond to. I just want to make sure we hear about that.
And absolutely, we will forward everything that we gather. We're directing it through Cody and we're making sure that it gets to the right eyes if it needs more immediate attention. And Tom, I see your hand up. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda. So one of your slides when describing the committee had an entry for business liaison. And I understood that there were going to be business operators being a part of the committee. Is that not true any longer? And can you tell me what you're doing for liaison to businesses? The third thing I want to know, just along that same line, is I know a couple of storekeepers that are on Lanita that have expressed some interest. But, you know, like we got an inquiry about whether the city was actively notifying contractors about the dark sky ordinance. And is there a plan to bring contractors into the conversation too?
That's a great question. And as far as getting business owners on the PASC, I think attempts have been made. It's a difficult ask because I think attempts have been made. It's a difficult ask because of the time commitment. I don't think that door is closed, but I'm not certain where we're at with that. But the effort that's underway, Rick Jackson and Patrick Johnston are helping me with the initial work on this. But we're actually planning this week to head out and visit every business in town with a flyer and ask them to participate. We plan to function as their liaison throughout this project. So we're each taking about 20 different businesses and saying, "I'm your point of contact. If you can't attend these meetings, what do you wish we could get back to the city?" So they know your values, your vision, your issues, your concerns. So we really want to involve our business owners as much as possible. And if they can't be on the committee, then we will come to them. We will, and we're asking them for as much time as they're willing to give us. But we want to make sure that they know, this is a two-way relationship, that we're keeping them up to date with what's going on, what decisions are upcoming, what's what decisions have been made and kind of give them quarterly updates along the way and make sure that they know what we're talking about next. And if they have something to contribute, we'll bring that forth. So that's the plan. That's sort of, it's a nascent plan. We're just getting going on it. But if you have ideas for that to be more robust, we would love to hear it. And.
I think it'd be good to get the, I think it'll be good to get the feedback from the businesses about
Yeah.
what they can commit to. I would say, for example, for me, you know, and I've been known to just jump into the deep end sometimes and not really know what commitment's going to look like. But this has ended up being more time-intensive than I thought it might be. In my personal opinion, this is my personal opinion, which you can get, you know, we want to get the opinions and perspectives of the business owners is, I think if we can find another way to connect them that does not require committee meetings and that structure, that'll be a better model for them, which is different than how I was thinking about it months ago when we were getting this started. But we'll see. So if Linda and the Hardy crew, who's going around the business community, gets feedback that's different and we can structure it differently to better suit them, then that's just what we'll do. We've got a lot of flexibility there.
Yeah, exactly. I've been saying to a couple of the business owners, like, we don't want to be a solution looking for a problem. We want to really make this work for you. This is just our idea right now, but it could adapt and it could change. So.
Linda, could I fill that answer just a little bit?
Please, yes.
Yeah, so Tom, in part responding to your question. So what Linda, Patrick, and I have done is we've taken the brick-and-mortar businesses of Manzanita, which totals about 65 to 70 businesses. And we've divided that between the three of us. We each have 20-ish each that we're going after. You asked about contractors. So we have a list of all the organizations that have business licenses in Manzanita. And our initial effort is to reach out to the brick-and-mortar. And what we're doing is we're inviting them to attend a business leader-only dedicated PASC discussion section. We've got three dates. We'll see how we fill up those three dates. We'll add more dates if we need more dates. I'm guessing we will. I'm hoping we will. But we're going to start with three dates that we're offering to business leaders to come in. Hopefully, at points in time where business leaders can actually come. So we've been thoughtful about that. But what we don't have at this point is a thorough plan to go beyond that. So a lot of the contractors who have business licenses, some operate out of their homes in Manzanita, some further afield, but they operate in Manzanita. And at this stage, right now, as I talked to you on October 16th, we don't have a definitive plan how we're going to reach those folks.
But we do want to.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think we'll learn a lot from the brick-and-mortar effort and then we'll see how that applies.
Yes.
Yeah, and it's a good one. It's a good group to raise contractors because it's such an important and really unique view onto the community. Because when we talk about growth, I mean, those are the folks in those businesses that are literally building the places for people to live and the places for people to work. So I would just suggest to the team, if you need, if part of the outreach is to grab a couple people who are more knowledgeable about the history of the contractors, who's perhaps Tom will end up being one of those folks because there is sort of like, almost like folkloric element to some of the folks who've been around a long time.
Sure.
But we can, I'm sure, figure out a way to get you some help with somebody who's really knowledgeable about that community and could help figure out the next stage of outreach. Because, yeah, and it's a nice combination of people who come in here to work but don't actually live in Manzanita, for the most part, so.
Yeah, that's great, Catherine. I was also follow-up. Tom, you mentioned you've got some good relationships with some of the business owners and to all council members. We have a defined list. And if you want to be involved or want to put your voice forward with ours, that would make our request that much more powerful. Just get in contact. Linda, are you okay if I say, get in contact with Linda? Let us know what businesses you want to help cover. Linda will be able to tell you which of the three of us is focused on that and then we'll work with you to get the message out.
Great.
Thank you very much.
It's really good. Jerry? Oh, you're muted.
So this is sort of a process question because I think it's very important that everybody understand the conversation that we just had, that there are many stakeholder groups that are going to be listened to throughout this process. You've made that clear. And I think that goes without saying, that's, you got to do that. We've got, you know, a lot of people would say that our town's greatest asset is our beach. Well, our beach belongs to everybody in Oregon. So obviously, we have many non-voting, non-resident stakeholders to listen to. But at some point, you have to listen to all of these various groups, interest groups. And there's got to be some sort of balancing of equities among and between interest groups. And so I just want to make sure we understand from your group, your goal is to engage the community broadly. It then falls on other groups, like the Planning Commission and ultimately the city council, to take all of this data that you're bringing forward and to make decisions down the road about the comp plan. So you're not saying today that, you know, you guys are declaring who gets to weigh in. You know, you are declaring and you should, who gets to weigh in in terms of the input, but you're not the final arbiters.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it is a layered approach. And that's why there is no, you know, one single final arbiter. It's a kind of an iterative approach that really brings together all of this input from all of these different stakeholder groups.
Yes.
There is a weighing process or a balancing process built in as we go forward.
Right. And the three-day team, I think, will be taking the lead on that analysis and bringing back the recommended policies and chapters for our review to make sure it's capturing what we've heard. But so that'll be our involvement in that process. But it's, we're the data gatherers mostly and trying to engage as many people as possible. And then we pass that off to the smart people to figure out what to do with it.
Hey, I am curious, since, you know, living here in Manzanita, at least for me, I think for others, some others, it feels like you're living in part of a multi-community region. I mean, I, you know, we shop and we eat and we have fun in Wheeler and Nahalem. You know, there are unincorporated areas that connect the three communities. Are any of the other, well, are any of the other two cities going through a process like this or have gone through a process like this recently or?
I don't know the status of Nahalem and Wheeler's comprehensive plans. I know that everybody's going through the housing ordinance review and update process that's state mandated and has to be done by next July. So every community's going through some sort of process to look at that component. But I think this is a true statement that Manzanita is the only Tullamook County community that's doing the ordinance updates and the comp plans at the same time.
Got you. Okay.
Attended the Wheeler Candidates Forum and the candidates uniformly were speaking in favor of a review of their comprehensive plan.
Yeah. Thanks. Anything else? Well, you know where we are, so you can follow up with us anytime and please do.
And it's okay to approach each of you in the grocery store or, you know.
Yes, yes, please do.
Okay, okay. I see John Collier nodding too, so we're all up for that.
Even when I'm power walking around town with my headphones on, just wave and I'll.
I know you've pulled your earbuds off a few times as you've gone by me and I've had a question, so thank you for that. So we really do completely and truly appreciate the volunteers for this. I mean, you all jumped in with really good spirits and good motivation and each with your own talents to offer. And have just been very open to like the working through the normal growth pains of like starting something. And I mean, there's a lot, no one will know all the logistical hoops you went through to begin with. And we won't elaborate them here, but I want to give you a big thank you for your patience and helping us figure out the best way to run this basically two-plus-year effort. So it's really appreciated. Thanks a lot to everybody.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to be involved and I'm happy to do it.
Alrighty. So does anybody have anything else for the good of the order? I know my dog is ready to be fed, but that's not a reason to adjourn a meeting. Does anybody need anything else today? All right, we're good. So I'm going to call this meeting adjourned at 3:04 PM. I hope everybody enjoys the rest of their day. Thank you to everyone.
Thank you.